What? You can't say that. The guy's heading out the door. I didn't say it.
You kinda did.
I said, oh god. I thought he was.
Oh boy, he can hear us. This damn thing.
The new thing works way better than the old one.
Today's Monday, February twenty fourth, twenty twenty five. I'd like to open the regularly scheduled meetings of the Allentown and Hampshire for our selectmen at six P M. Let's start with the.
Of the United States. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God.
They're supposedly deceived.
First, come so.
Kathleen Calcia.
Here, hi there.
John Henry. I see my.
Peter DeSantis, President.
John Charles.
Mike Frasenella, E D C.
Brian Asenoff, Filomenz, Director.
Catherine Zero, Agent.
Eric Lambert, Fire Chief.
Diana Moco.
Online with, online with us, the C B.
Yes.
Mike Stark, Chief of Police.
We might. You're muted, David.
David Lake, President.
Get right to citizens' comments. Any citizens' comments here? Mike Frasenella. But it's uh been online. Published by one of my stories about our illustrious police chief. Certainly from the last month, working on about ten different stories. About the town. Tommy Lacazza, publisher of Books and Books and Bridge News. Has decided on the Allentown reporter. You know, be clear of the report. But I've done stories on Florence and the gravel. On A D S and A R D, the continuing saga of the Rednecks Story. Two hometown heroes that we're gonna have up on our streets. The Allentown Library, who's school, who's from the school. News about Obashan. And the committee met with from McDonald's and it was like this. Unless something about a left field, but one or two in Harvard, so if the miles around me disappeared by the next year. One thing I suggested to the planning board was that we make it so that the McDonald's and they have a new venue I call the their burger and like down. And the ongoing task I put upon myself was allowing people to write statements about their candidacy. Created the town, the web page. People have been sending things in, in drips and drats. A few, well, a few submissions over the weekend. The main idea was, I believe, people should not learn from the office. Once they tell us why and what they've accomplished. The Books and Bridge Newspaper also offered free space on one company website, need to post the same information to get much more coverage. So it's mainly called the third that that I didn't newspaper or detect it. So that is the place to go to if you wanna know what you're running and what they're running for. So that issue should be coming out beginning of March. And there's also a new this will be the last issue, which will have us out a Suncoke section. They decided to split it off and create an online version of Suncoke News. So in the future, we have an online website. For Allentown Pen Book. Exclusive stories from those two towns. So it's gonna challenge for all challenges. But it's uh, these ten stores are finally done. Thank you.
Yes, thank you so much for your dedication to keeping the Allentown residents in Fort Mikey. You always do a great job.
I have a bit of dialogue that kept coming to mind and I finally found, it was uh in an old movie called Cool Hand Luke with Bill Nunn. It was a taskmaster who used to say, what we have here is our failure to communicate. We got seen happening too much around here. That's why I write stories. Cause his failure to communicate a lot of detail. Everyone's deliberate session and kind of down goes about what was happening there. But I decided that it was not enough information being presented to people about white budgets for the way they are. So I started doing some investigating and I wound up with a fifteen hundred word story.
The budget work cut out for you.
That the newspaper was, was saying, it's gonna fill two pages, you gotta cut that down. But that's the kind of stuff that I think needs to get out there. People need to know. Uh, you know, for example, the hybrid budget is not padded, being padded for no reason. I mean, the sellers has got got us paying more for trash trucks than we ever have. And the fire department is not wasting money on equipment. Their budget was only slightly larger than last year's if you count fire department plus ambulance. Plus a lot of that increase is gonna be offset by revenue from uh uh, emergency calls that they, that they transport. Thank you, Mike. Anybody else or citizens?
I have a, I just wrote a town story, be concise. Oops, Peter DeSantis, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
President. Um, so I've listened to past four selecting meetings as well as some online community forums about political views of the town officials that portray our current elected state leader is not representing the citizens of Allentown. And I'd like to remind them that the voters in November third election elected our governor and the senate and the representatives um, by a majority, Republican, Republicans straight down the ballot. So I think to insinuate that these elected officials are not representing the residents of Allentown is really not accurate. And um, secondly, on the um, there are many bills proposed in legislature that really never make it out of committee. And anybody can post any type of, or propose any bill that they want. And I think it's fair that the town of Allentown or the board is looking at these bills, but just remember again that certain political views may not represent the majority of, of right views. That's about it. This is like, thank you.
I, I have to ask.
Yes.
Commenting on something I may have said about one of our local state representatives.
Not necessarily you or anybody, but I just wanted, you know, sometimes a little bit more, and I'll say this is my own personal view. In the past, we've a lot of talk about charter schools also. I'm in favor of charter schools and I know it would be something that the town would have to accommodate or look at at that, but again, looking back at the election, a majority of residents in Allentown voted Republican and I'm assuming the Republican type views are, are on, on, on different, you know, um thing. So I'm not saying specific, I just over the last few, I've noticed, I just want to remind the board that, you know, they represent everybody, not just maybe one side. I'm not specifically saying you or Kathleen or anybody. But I just got the impression sometimes that you know, as this probably at the last election, we were talking about the center leadership or something, but that's all. I mean, it's just something that kinda, I need to say something and that's the form to say it, so.
I'm glad you did, absolutely. Um, I'm a lifelong Republican.
Okay.
And they're not doing us any favors up there when it comes to school funding. Our representatives, our local state representatives do not represent our, our best interest.
I would, see, I would disagree with that.
I can show you how the money's drying up to prove it.
Okay.
All right. But thank you.
You're welcome. No, thank you.
We did have a nice ceremony for Sandy. Uh, got on the rail char Saturday. It was a little cold. They're probably even be proud somewhat. But uh, Sandy had quite a few folks from her family show up. And it was nice to remember her and I hope the folks walking by that, you know, will, will recognize that. Uh, Mike, before you leave today, um, I told Rachel that you would come and take pictures and write a story. Um, I have pictures for you. Ron was nice enough to take pictures. And, and they should work and we'll talk after she can write a story and send it something to her. Any, any other citizens' comments? All right, here we go. We'll go straight to the police chief who's got a agreement on a new cruiser for us to review.
Yep, so we're gonna um, continue with the lease program that we've been doing for the last um seventeen, eighteen years. It's working out so far. Um the leases are broken into three uh, payments and you have in front of you what will be the lease for the twenty twenty five Dodge Durango. Um, and so there should be a sample motion if that goes to what you guys would like. And then if you authorize me to sign it, then we can uh, sign it, get the paperwork done and get it uh, over to Global where they outfit it and make it into an actual real police car.
Excellent. Any timeline on this, Chief?
What, what's that again?
Any timeline on this?
Uh, the, the cruiser's at the dealership, so as soon as we get, we're really just as soon as the paperwork's done, it's a matter of shuttling it up to the right places and uh, then we're in business. So uh, we, the last couple of years, we've been trying to get ahead of it as much as we can because of the various supply chain issues and we've finally caught up with ourselves. So now the cars are chasing us. So uh, it's a little better position to be in.
Excellent. Any questions at the chief? All right. Chief Oliver puts exactly what to say here. Whereas we have determined that a true and a very real need exists for the acquisition of a new Dodge Durango. I move that we adopt the less than resolution as presented by Chief Michael Stark to enter into a lease agreement with tax exempt leasing court for the acquisition of a new Dodge Durango for use as a lease cruiser. The lease total for the vehicle and the outfit shall not exceed sixty three thousand one hundred dollars for the yearly payment of twenty two thousand four hundred fifty six dollars and thirty six cents for three years. I also moved that Chief Stark be authorized to execute this agreement on behalf of the order of selection.
Well, second that.
All in favor?
Chief taking a big side.
Tricia.
Kathleen.
Karen.
Scott.
Thank you, everybody. I appreciate I'll keep you updated when we get the cruiser coming our way.
It's you.
Um, I'm new here for F one tires. Um we're kind of rounding up, finishing up the round of um, interviews that we did. We have five people. I had to deal with the last, being the last to be, the two, the final two. Uh, we have one more that she's waiting on the background. Prominent physical, um, the two that I'm waiting for this morning, uh, this evening.
There we are.
John Mahoney and Nicholas Smallwood, both level two certified firefighters, both A D S Ts, one A M T, one A D. Um, both very well experienced. Um, one retired of peace. Um, he is an instructor. Um he works part time for the state fire launching office. Um, so he's looking for some pretty young stuff. He lives right in Concord. Um, wants to help out, um, with doing some pretty good shifts to keep his A M T up. Uh, and also wants to help out in any way possible with trainings. So very good candidate. Uh, the second one is um, Nicholas Smallwood. Also, I think I had in the backlist. He lives in Concord. You know, the gentleman is in Chelsea, but he's moving to Manchester. He is um, an instructor, uh, was a training coordinator for many years, um, even an attorney. Um, is well experienced in a lot of volunteer fire departments, coordination of training, coordination of a multitude of things. Uh, he's an agent and be and again, he's, he's looking to come this way so he can pay for his, moving to the Hampshire and he wants to keep his skills up, but the plethora of uh, information and education experience for me is quite amazing. Um, so I can't see not um, moving him forward because with everything coming in the future with our training staff and everything else, he's a really good asset to help over the committee to help us build on that project. So um, and I have one other that's coming next week and I just have one great stuff. He's another different school from the Air Force, um uh, instructor. I don't know, had three really great candidates. So those are looking to move forward tonight so I can get them in the process and get them working.
Chief, which one of these gentlemen is E M T advanced?
Um, did I put E M T in both?
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. John Mahoney is an E M T. And you know, in, in class two B one, so it will be a matter of time before we can say we teach it. And the gentleman coming up from the next one is actually providing to, so just be better. So um, yeah.
Sure. I, I, your last term is speaking.
Um, so we lost six, um, and I've interviewed five, so we're actually kind of still down one. So um, after I, I distracted the captain after this, we're shutting off the yeah, the hiring stuff. So we can make sure we have, you know, enough pretty much to go around where we, we're getting participation, but we're also making sure that we're not uh, exceeding our year. Um, we did not get a year. A lot of the volunteers have the year, volunteer, volunteer departments in the north of us that year doesn't affect much. So we did not get any, and for a little grant, so. But yes.
Any questions for?
Do you find when you're hiring some of these folks that have multiple positions?
No.
Do you, that, that's, you know, been creating any issues or they all come in here a hundred percent?
No.
Cause I hear, you know, some of the ones you just mentioned have had multiple
Yeah.
positions at once.
No, and they come in here, a lot of them come in here, um, and I kind of set the standard when they come here basically as like a lot of the departments around the country and we always have, especially where I came from in Hudson, you always have an adjustment of call firefighters to full time firefighters. Keeping the peace between the two to make sure that, you know. And I pretty much said, you know, I'd stand up and they command that we're, we're just a one department. And uh, there's one voice that comes out of that department, you know, so do pretty well with that to make sure you understand that just because you're coming from Southern Massachusetts doesn't mean you're just gonna command swoop everything up and take charge of it. Have to blend in the right way, you know, John, I talked about some stuff last week that, that may have very much for our standard. It is just gonna be, yeah, so.
And so are they keeping, like, do they sometimes keep a position at another
Um, they do. Sometimes they do, but the ones that are moving up here, um, a lot of them are, but they're leaving that because they wanna come this way. The gentleman that's moving up here, they're not, he's leaving Southern Massachusetts and coming to New Hampshire so that you can't.
I thought you said Manchester.
Yeah, one was in Manchester, one's from Chelsea, one's from which one's from Chelsea and one's from like not Pittsburgh, there's another one. Close to it's almost three out of the
I understand it can be difficult to recruit people at all, right?
Yeah, and I'll, I'll tell you the
Like you got to the spot.
Um, the the general thing that's happening right now in a lot of departments, because my department right now, they just lost six people again to Nashville and Manchester. And we have a, a young gentleman who's in the class for firefighter one. They have offered him before, he thinks it's a fire floor unconditional officer, offer, he passed in that class. So for us to reel in some of these experienced individuals right now, I think it's really good because not a lot of them are. So I have a key statement to run off the table and that's most of the conversations. So and they're one of them. It's really tough right now to get experienced firefighters ready to and be good friends.
It's tough to be experienced in any of these, any of these jobs. Any other questions for each? I move that Chief Eric Lambert be allowed to hire Nicholas Smallwood, firefighter two, E M T instructor. And John Mahoney, firefighter two, E M T advanced instructor, fire inspector, both as on call firefighters at the hourly rate of twenty three ninety nine per hour effective day on fifteenth, two thousand twenty five. All in favor?
Worris, Trishon.
Catherine and I.
Gemma.
Scott.
Thank you guys very much.
You too.
Speaker, I, I ask the usual questions.
Yeah.
As the driver. Anything going on in the new bank? When can you see the new equipment in there?
Um, the, the radio debt program last week. Um, and you might see it up tomorrow, taking care of some of the lights in the station. Um, and that'll be in service able to this week. Now that the radio is done, they're running fire clock, go to fire on fifteen before they can put on a note. You know, you're gonna start to go out first for one, so I go to second for. So as soon as that, um, will be on, so all the equipment's on it, people done the training on it. So it'll be going up very soon. And the new reality is like, uh, last, prior to last, um, and March fifteenth, I don't think it should be arriving, so. And it'll be good. Thank you guys very much. Have a good night.
Yeah, thank you. I'm proud of the person.
I will.
Thank you. Appointed town treasurer.
Well, I have two questions.
Awesome.
Um so I know that we switched it to an appointed treasurer and I see that we have the RSA's, but do we have an actual job description for a treasurer for Allentown?
I have to look. I haven't seen one.
I, I personally do think that we should definitely get that set up.
Yeah.
And then depending on how this conversation goes, some of it maybe should take place in a month. I just wanna be careful that nobody says anything in a public session that should be not. Yes.
I'll look for a job description, see what.
I just think it's a great opportunity for us to be able to put in timelines, deadlines, you know, expected communication, you know, if you, if you receive notice of something or reply within forty eight hours or, you know, make it reasonable, but very clear so that the person serving this position really understands what the expectations are, which the RSA yeah.
The association has a whole presentation on their website.
Yes.
Of what, and they didn't link back to the RSA's as well.
I would also ask that, you know, we are posting this opportunity and while we have some preempted interest that we may get known to the public so that we are exploring all our potential options.
Well, I'm prepared with this too. Next meeting, next meeting.
Hello. You mean for the person or is it?
Yeah, I was looking forward to your debate, but I guess that's not, all right?
I think we do need to better job description and decide on that.
It was a joke. I'm all ill timed. No. John has a lease agreement here on a high capacity printer. Since he found out uh, our election. And uh, other times he always had to print off a lot of stuff. It's getting very expensive. And uh that's a very busy printer back there, so.
It is being the only printer we have in the building that has any capacity. It was very difficult to find any time to print off materials for budget meetings or public hearings. And so I went out and uh, had it printed at Staples. I don't want to do that again. It was enormously expensive. So I contacted the lease company that we're currently dealing with. I can get uh, one step up machine. It's a Canon. It won't take any more of a footprint than it already has. But I've also included a punch uh, installed system within it. Right now we go out and buy old paper, which is more expensive than regular plain paper because we don't have that capacity. This way we can use our regular copy paper and stuff we hold. Supervisor of the checklist uses it quite often as to why the people worried about our critical boards. The total increase is a hundred and fifty nine dollars a year, which I'm sure I can find saving elsewhere to pay for. The uh, new lease for the new machine.
Oh, wow.
This is sixty payments. It's trying to crack dollars. So.
Will it replace any of our um, outsourced printing such as like the town or anything like that?
No, it doesn't have that. We need a much bigger.
Not really, but it'd be.
So I, I move that John be allowed to enter into this agreement, uh, municipal lease agreement, Canon Financial Services. And like this sixty months, two hundred thirty dollars a month. All in favor? To create everyone. Scott.
Thank you.
And gave us the copy.
Yeah. Several items for you this evening. At the request of the board, Rita, myself and Veronica, that were the S A U Business Administrator, Amber Wheeler. And we have very positive meeting. Uh, we came up with an agreeable payment schedule for the school district that meets both of our needs. Um and that will be put in place going forward for the next payment schedule. That will not put an undue hardship on the town nor the school district. So I wanted to report back to you on that. I have great news that the twenty twenty two audit has been completed.
Yes.
So we are making progress. They already have been simultaneously working on twenty twenty three. Uh, I hope to record when that's, that completion as soon as it's available. Soon as the reports are available, I will share them with the board. I, I would like to plan on the next meeting, March tenth to include a non-public session immediately following. We have three candidates that have expressed interest in the police chief. We have three candidates that have expressed interest in the police chief position. And with your, uh, uh, approval, I will set up interviews immediately following the business meetings. I will keep the meeting alight in order to keep the interviews early enough after the meeting. Is everybody acceptable with that?
Wh- when is that, Ken?
The next board meeting, March tenth, Monday.
March tenth, yes.
Yeah. And I'll head for tonight.
Um, I have some other questions. Um, I wanted to, I've been contacted by a couple residents. Who are concerned about our delinquency taxes that have not been. So I know the answer to some of your questions, but I promised them that I would bring it up, and I wanted to make sure it's discussed publicly. So can you tell us where we are in our lien deed process?
I've got the letters, have them printed. They've been stuffed and mailed.
And those are the delinquency notice?
They're both, yes.
Okay, but they're not the actual lien, because they're not the certified mailings that go out, that are pressed at first.
Correct, correct. This includes deed information, uh, for those folks that have had. Previous liens, and now they're in jeopardy of deeding, that's included in the letter itself.
And it's my understanding that for the year twenty-twenty-four, no letters were sent, so effectively, the board's hands are, are tied in that regard. We wouldn't be able to move forward with the dating process right now, um, even if we wanted to, so you want to make sure the board realizes. That there is nothing at this time that the board could move forward with. We have to wait until the next. Steps are taken this year, and once those deed letters go out, then we could possibly move forward with the deeds. And that is pending that the process is followed completely, all by law, um. We could, however, in the meantime, if people reach out to us about concerns with their delinquent balances, we could set up payment arrangements. So I just want to check it out.
Thank you.
Um, where are we at of the purchase and sales agreements in the public meetings and that whole process?
They've been signed by the school. Uh, the school has been in touch with their attorneys. And I'm waiting on a start date so that that clock. Stuck, so I'm with old schools, so I'm able to report back to you when about we would be taking next steps. I have not heard back from the school district yet.
And I also, a follow-up kind of along that lines, um, at that meeting that Scott and I attended at the fire department with the school board. When we talked about coming up with a new payment schedule with the school, we had also talked about trying to schedule. A regular series of joint meetings, either once or twice a year, where the school board and select board meet. And I know that the select, the school board members said that they were amenable to that, like, because they wanted to fall by the wayside. So I would really like to make sure that we communicate with them and try to schedule something, um. I, I know it's tough because their budget is different than ours, you know, the, the fiscal versus the calendar budget, but I just think it would really benefit. The town as a whole, if we take the time to meet with them, understand what their objectives are, what hardships they're facing as we're trying to plan. For our next year and figure out what our objectives are. I, I just think we're really going to benefit everybody if we can. Find a way to work together, just like we did with this payment schedule, so I'd like to see more, more of that in the future.
I'll reach out then.
Thank you so much, John. I just loaded me right up to me. One more too, so I don't think it'll be adding to the weight, but, um. I've had a few new neighbors come in in my neighborhood and other people around town approach me about really not knowing. You know, what's available to them in town, you know, what, where, where to go for different things. And I know that our town clerk office in the past has had like a welcome new residence packet.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so if we could look into having that reestablished, I think that would really help to. Play to the transparency that, you know, we talk about having for our residents. And the community that we're trying to build in the town, um. I think that folks would really like, maybe like.
Welcome, why don't you just do it with.
And, and to, to build on that, I dropped the ball. I was supposed to email you with some websites to look at. Because I brought that up at the last meeting and I never did. I apologize for that.
All right.
I thought I like three times, and I was like, why don't you add to my, well, I didn't. But in the meeting, I would recommend checking out Brentwood. Folkset and I dropped, so I mean, even the whole site, unless they have really good websites that I think are very, uh, easy to navigate. If you go on there and want to find information for the last kind of meeting or the budgets, I mean, it's two clicks of a button, you know, they are. Um, it's, it's really what we need to do, our residents are.
They, they really are, and they, the ones that are getting, getting the email notifications, they're appreciative of that, but they also find that to be a whole. You know, like, I gotta click three, four times before I get to what I need. So, but this is really going back to the very first step of just having some sort of packet of, you know, of our new residents and. Into our website and other resources, so. You know, departments in town, whatever, could be a substance to them.
Any, any other, other questions?
Um, one other thing I wanted to bring up, last year, we had a gentleman come in that. Wanted to do, you know, clean up in the town's town, the litter got, right?
Yeah.
Called me, thank you, I couldn't remember his name. If we couldn't reach back out to him, um. Other towns that do this, they send out a flyer as well in advance, letting people know that this is coming. People can step up and volunteer. I think last year it was kind of like he. Came in with it and at the time that he wanted to do it, but I think if we can get.
There was a flyer last year.
He did do a flyer.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but I think, you know, if we can get it out there even earlier, because it was very close to the time.
And what does he do?
He, he was doing trash pickup in the town.
He organized a community cleanup day, where he has Allenstown.
So I reached out to NRA, I got some supplies to. NRRA.
Well.
And he got some, he got some pickers somewhere.
And he, he received some donations. Monetary donations to purchase additional, uh, material to the town.
I have his contact information at the shop. You remind me, I can get it too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can, can I ask the board, wasn't that a question about? Insurance and if he's working for the town or something like that? Has anybody else recall that?
No, he's, because he was volunteer.
Oh, okay.
Yes, it's a, and a citizen volunteer, that he didn't have any, you know, sanction it as not included.
That's it.
Group getting together on their own, he just came, you know, politely and to make awareness, I think, let us know what he was doing. And make sure that he wasn't violating anything or doing anything.
Thank you for the clarity.
That would be good for us to support it by announcing it through the website, you know.
Mm-hmm.
Which aluminum do you think is in those Martian's in twenty-eight?
That blue aluminum?
Those big aluminum cans, mostly the same brand. After years, they're gone, they get old and grown and.
Mm-hmm.
You think we're, we can go to our consent calendar in a few dozen minutes.
Great, so I'm gonna make a motion to approve the public meeting minutes of. February tenth, twenty-twenty-five, third, I'll second that.
Everyone's comfortable with them?
Yeah. Good.
This is also, so all in favor?
I'm seeing, as a president. Trishan, Catherine and I.
Gemma.
Um, I'm looking to approve, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-four check manifest status number eighty-three, twenty-twenty-four. Nope, there's nothing there. The town payroll manifested to twenty-twenty-five. So that batch eighty-three should be actually a twenty-twenty-five check. Oh, twenty-twenty-four, yeah, 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 okay. Yeah.
I have the physical copies here, but I think we all, or this is, you're saying, or. I'm just, you know. Dylan? I believe so, yes, okay. All right. Uh.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Worris, Trishan, Catherine and I.
Gemma.
And Scott. And. I think that's it. We have no more comments, correct?
No.
Can we do a non-public?
Did people sign a minute?
I think, yeah, we're, we're still nine, please wait. Do you want to sign in or do you? Yeah, but Simon won't get it going back this way. Thank you.
She didn't know. Absolutely, posted it on. Related treasures.
Yes.
Stay as I'm sure. Be. Be. I'll begin that. I move that the, uh, board entering a full session and board, board's with provisions. RSA ninety-one down the.
I don't know.
Row and three, part two. Six forty. Peace.
Second.
All in favor?
Worris, Trishan, Catherine and I.
Yeah. I'm, I'm. Scott, yeah.
Yeah, Mike, you're staying in my job for a while, I'll see you. Thank you, guys. Did I hear be off? Be off.
Sent you the pictures. A long, a long time ago. Plot number.
You sure, go, be off, will you?
Sign is that?
My day.
Mine's time to get this.
It is.
You guys take it out.
So. When I tried it, it's annoying. And there's Alexis sitting in the lot, and there's BMW sitting in the lot, I think it's. That's just what we need to, to seek. This is Joe Alexis and, and. Um, Veronica got herself a BMW yesterday. Yeah.
Why everybody's dying?
So you couldn't get a corolla, huh?
All right, is there, are the cameras off and stuff? Alright, is there, are the cameras off and stuff too?